6:00 PM, September 8th, 2021. I'd like to open the zoning board of appeals meeting for this evening. I'd like to announce that the meeting is being televised live on local channel 18. Now if we could all rise, we'll say the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited, and just as far.
All right, I'd like to announce that we're going to take public comments on every hearing at the end of that hearing. Okay, board member Bill Blaisdell and associate member Jim Ray Fath are absent tonight. So sitting on the first hearing will be our four regular board members as well as Sharon. So Sharon, would you read the first, I believe it's a new one?
Continued?
First, continued, thank you.
164 Ninnegret Ave., owners David W. Nichols and Deborah L. Nichols requested written finding under 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a second-floor addition to a pre-existing non-conforming single-family residence on property located in an R3 zoning district. Map 65, parcel 85, Mashpee, Mass.
Hi.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Corrane, and I have the pleasure of representing the Nichols in connection with this specific written finding request. I have provided the board with my written remarks as well as some photographs of existing conditions, and there are also copies of plans attached to that document as well. The property at 164 Ninnegret is a non-conforming lot consisting of some 7,440 square feet, 6,250 of which is upland. The site is bounded on two sides by a street or a way. However, the way to the west, Secana Drive, is a way that doesn't exist. It's a way that basically lies between all these properties that border on the pond at that location. And if you take a look at some of the photographs that I had provided, essentially all those property owners along the pond basically use Secana Ave. as their backyard. That lot, that street has never been developed, and I suspect it never will be developed, never get by conservation. The parcel slopes significantly from east to west as it drops towards Secana Drive and Johns Pond. The existing structure, as you can see, if you've had an opportunity to go out there, the photographs may not do it justice, but it is a single-story ranch-style structure with a walkout basement beneath the first-floor deck. The structure is non-conforming in that it fails to meet existing front yard setback requirements from Ninnegret and the side yard setback criteria in the R3 zoning district. As I said, the application provides that the Nichols seek to add a second story to the structure. The entire second story that they seek to add is within the footprint of the existing building and its attached decks. So there is no increase in any of the non-conforming aspects of the structure. As you can know, the R3 zoning district requires a 40-foot front yard setback and 15 to the rear and the side and 50 feet from wetland resource areas. This structure sits about 26.2 feet from Ninnegret, 14 from the northerly sideline, 9 from the southerly sideline. And the existing building coverage is at 21.4%. The proposed coverage is at 21%, both conforming to the required 25% on lots that are less than 10,000 square feet. So as I said, the entire second-floor addition is within the footprint of the existing structure and its attached decks. 174-17 of the bylaw allows for alterations and changes to pre-existing non-conforming structures, provided the board finds that the alterations or changes will not create a condition that is significantly more, substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what currently exists, and that there is adequate setbacks and parking as the board may deem necessary. Given the fact that the proposed reconstruction of that second story is not increasing or exacerbating any of the pre-existing non-conforming conditions, and that there is adequate land area both for parking and the setbacks that currently exist are not being lessened, I would suggest to the board that there is sufficient documentation and information to enable the board to make the appropriate specific written finding under 174-17.
Go ahead, you can have it.
The project, I believe, has been approved by both the Conservation Commission and signed off on by Board of Health.
I don't have any real issues with it actually at all. My only question is, is there any reason why the existing shed can't be moved into compliance? Looks like it's right up against the lot line.
I don't know. I can ask whether or not that can be done.
Might be on a foundation if it's older.
But it's been there for quite some time, I suspect.
If it's on a foundation, there's no way you move it. This was existing. I don't think we have much, I don't think we can make a move it if it's existing.
It's tough to tell exactly by looking at the photographs what it's sitting on.
That doesn't, I don't know. It looks almost like it's not a foundation.
Looks like an 8x10 to me.
It's skirted though.
Yeah, it is skirted. I bet you, it's almost like it's not a foundation, but it's hard to tell.
My only concern with moving that is it will send us back to the Conservation Commission to amend any orders of conditions because it is, it would be a change. It would be a change from what the Conservation Commission has approved. So the Conservation Commission doesn't really have any issues with it. As far as I know, we haven't received any comments from any abudits complaining about it.
Is that a fence behind it?
It looks like a dog run.
Really? It looks like a fence to me.
Pretty high for a fence.
No, I think that's, I think that's a run.
Yeah, it is a dog.
That's a dog run that runs in front of the, in front of the.
You are correct.
Oh, yeah.
It's pretty well, that entire area, if you look at the, if you look at the photographs I took from the front yard, the sidelines are pretty well treed on both sides so as to provide adequate screening. In the picture I took near the water, as I said, that's the street. That's Sacana Road.
It's not a big issue.
The shed is included in the lot coverage?
I believe.
It's a low anyway, so it's really bad.
And it's existing anyway because he's stacking. First floor top, second floor top, and first, so there's no additional square footage added.
It went down somehow.
It went down actually because one of the landings, the landings was taken out, so.
And the only thing I could mention, as far as existence of, if it was there for 10 years, it becomes a non-conforming existing, so.
Right.
I don't have a problem.
Any other questions, comments, concerns, anybody?
I got nothing.
Okay, anybody in the audience have any questions or comments?
Building's good. Third, the lot looks fine with the 50% coverage on the lower level. I think you're fine with that.
Yeah, I had the architects check on it.
All right, Sharon, can you read the comments for us?
164 Ninnegret, Board of Health, 164 Ninnegret Ave., Board of Health comments. The property is limited to two bedrooms due to the location in a Zone 2 and an undersized lot. The proposed floor plans have been reviewed and are compliant as a two-bedroom. Conservation, 164 Ninnegret Ave., this project has been approved by the Conservation. Any restored lawn areas within wetlands jurisdiction must be compliant with Mashpee's Chapter 172 Regulation 31 Lawn Standards. Documentation regarding seed and/or sod species must be provided to the Conservation Department.
Okay. Have anything from anybody else?
I don't think so.
Regarding this? Nope. Okay. No final comments? Ron, would you like to make a motion?
I would love to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we issue a written finding to Deborah L. Nichols and David W. Nichols of 164 Ninnegret Ave. under Section 174-17 of the zoning bylaw to allow for construction of a second-floor addition to a pre-existing non-conforming single-family residence property located in an R3 zoning district, map 65, parcel 85, Mashpee, Mass. With the following conditions. One, board has determined the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mashpee General Laws 48, Section 6. Two, plan of land for 164 Ninnegret Ave., Mashpee, Mass. Proposed conditions, June 23rd, 2021, prepared for PAV construction, Mr. Pavlin Pezev, PO Box 983, South Yarmouth, Mass., BSC Group, West Yarmouth, Mass., signed by Karen Healy, professional landscape surveyor number 48135, dated 6/23/21. Number three, proposed section floor addition renovation, David and Deborah Nichols, 164 Ninnegret Ave., Page 1, proposed front elevation, right-side elevation. Page 2, rear elevation and left-side elevation. Page 3, existing floor plan and basement floor plan, floor. Page 4, proposed first-floor plan. Page 5, proposed second floor. Page 6, proposed basement floor plan and framing, Section M. Condition on all town comments right on the record, including but not limited to the Conservation Commission's request as outlined and read into the record.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote. So Jim seconds. Sharon, how do you vote?
Yes.
And let's see, Jim, how do you vote?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Thank you very much.
Good. Good presentation. All right. I get to sign? I haven't, I haven't done this so long. I must get it out. The stamp and sign.
Google it.
There you go.
Did you get it?
Eight? Are there two of them? That's it?
Sharon?
I do.
All right.
Just move around.
All right, I'm going to step down in the next two hearings, so I'll have Ron Bonvie chair the next two hearings. Sharon, would you read the first one?
Five, Clamshell Lane. Owner Jeannie Scolli requests a special permit under 174-17.1 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a pre-existing non-conforming single-family structure on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 119, parcel 66, Mashpee, Mass.
So I think for this one, it's okay with you guys. Maybe Charlie, you sit in this one, and the next one, we'll have George sit there. We can rotate, both of you, does that work? And then the other members will be, the other people sitting at the table. There you go.
Okay, Kevin?
Once again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Kevin Corrane, for the record, and I have the pleasure of representing Andy Shiole in connection with the application that we use to replace a single-family residential residence. Andy is with us here tonight to put in any questions for the offer or delay. As you can see, and probably, we have a existing single-family, non-conforming structure on the site. The site itself is 3,350 feet, plus or minus 5 foot lot, and that is upland. It has 61 feet of frontage on Clamshell Lane, making it a very long and narrow building site. It is situated in the R3 zoning district, which requires a lot area of 20,000 square feet and 150 feet of frontage, which essentially makes this particular property a non-conforming lot. The Shioles seek to replace the 30-foot old home with a new dwelling, a new two-story dwelling consisting of four bedrooms, including a two-car garage. In addition to raising and replacing the structure, the Shioles are also proposing to install a new, up-to-date, state-of-the-art TAL5 septic system. The project has been approved by both the Conservation Commission, and I believe as recently as this afternoon, Delance had been emailed to Mary Ann, basically indicating that he is comfortable with the project as shown. The reconstruction of the structure, as you see on the lot, is also non-conforming in that it fails to meet the sideline setback. It sits at only 14.7 feet from the westerly sideline. It sits only 11, 8.2 feet from the chimney, but 11.4 feet from the easterly sideline. So the structure itself is non-conforming. It also only sits 45 feet from the bulkhead, which is the edge of the wetland resource area. We seek to, as you can see, replace that structure with a new structure, which improves some of the existing conditions. The new structure will now sit 15 to, 15.2 feet from the westerly sideline, and it'll sit 52 feet from the wetland resource area, but we are maintaining the same 11 point, actually, we're increasing to 11.7 from what was previously 11.4. So we're improving that sideline condition slightly as well. I believe I indicated the project has been approved by both Conservation and Board of Health. Section 174-17.1 allows for the raise and replacement of single-family residential structure. Standards are very similar to what is contained in Section 174-17. The board must determine whether or not one of these proposals is substantially more detrimental than existing conditions. The board must also find sufficient land area for parking. And third, the board must find that there is no variance relief required or requested. In this particular case, as I said, we are not seeking any variance relief because we're slightly improving the sideline setback criteria. We're also bringing in performance on the westerly side, bringing in performance with the 50-foot requirement from a wetland resource area. And we're also improving existing site conditions by upgrading the septic system, which currently exists also. Not to mention the fact that under the building code, we will have to build a structure that complies with current day building and flood zone criteria. There is a two-car garage, as you can see, that is proposed as part of this reconstruction, which I think addresses the concern that the board, any concern that the board would have relative to that with the area for parking, because as you know, on a residential structure, all the two vibrant spaces are required. Plus, there is additional land areas, you can see, between Clamshell Lane and the proposed structure to afford adequate area for additional parking needs that may be required. As I said to the board, I believe that what is being proposed by improving existing setback criteria, by installing a new septic, by building a structure that conforms to current day building and flood plain zone criteria, moving the structure further back from the wetland resource area, which I believe is also a significant improvement of existing conditions, that we are not creating a condition that is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what currently exists. And as I said, we are not seeking any variance relief, and I believe we have demonstrated that there is some adequate area for parking. If the board has any questions on that, happy to respond.
Well, I'd like to, if it's okay with the board, why don't we read into record the comments from the boards and various committees from this town, and then we go around the board and then go to the audience, if that works. Sharon, could you read maybe, conservation, does that work?
Yep. Conservation, five Clamshell Lane. This project has been approved by Conservation.
Could you read Board of Health? That was an easy one.
Yep. Five Clamshell Lane, Board of Health. The existing dwelling is a three-bedroom, but four primary bedrooms are proposed. Floor plans have been reviewed and are compliant for a four-bedroom. A new septic is proposed for four bedrooms. The proposed septic is compliant for four bedrooms. A Mashpee licensed septic installer must obtain a permit to install the septic prior to insurance of a building permit.
Okay, well, I'd like to go to the board next, comments from the board. I think Charlie, you're sitting on this one?
I guess the only question I had is, and this may be outdated by now, but there was an August 20th email from the building commissioner questioning the height. Has that been resolved?
I believe we did present plans to the elevation plans that demonstrate a height less than the.
Shows 34.9.
Okay. But I think, if I may, I was, yeah, I was going to go, it's gonna, I know he, our zoning enforcement officer wants to speak in reference to his application, I believe.
Well, the issue is, the house is 34.9, which is like maxed out, it's like basically 35 feet, maybe 3 inches low. But it goes from the, from the top of grade of the garage, which is 14 foot 5, but we measure it from the average natural, original natural grade, which hasn't been established yet, which would probably be a foot or maybe even two lower. So that would put this proposal probably over height. I don't know how the board would want it.
Correct me if, so as a board, I think we'd have probably two options. Number one is to get better clarification of that, ask for better clarification, or, and correct me if I'm wrong, ask our zoning enforcement officer to make certain that he's happy with that scenario and satisfied prior to either a building permit or an occupancy or whatever he chooses to do.
I agree with that. We could, I think we can vote on it as a condition that it doesn't exceed the 35 from average grade. And Cape and Islands should be able to give us that.
And they'll have to certify.
You need to establish that.
So I think we can condition that.
And if you stipulate that, that's fine with me.
So you would be the condition.
And we have to also stipulate that we're going to need a building heights, a certified building.
When do you think they should, you think they should do that at the time of your rough frame inspection?
The building height?
Yes.
Yes, but I think the average natural grade may be at the foundation.
Okay.
It needs to be established.
So.
So they can do it, but they'd have to maybe modify the scotch to ceiling or, you know, lower.
So maybe we just say, Scott, something to the effect that they have to satisfy the zoning enforcement officer's concern in reference to height, establishing the, staying within the height requirements of the town's zoning bylaw, or something of that nature.
I'm fine. You're the enforcement officer, so that's fine.
Yeah, we don't have a problem. We don't have a problem with that. The one other thing I would point out is that there are, there are two overhangs in connection with this proposed development, so there aren't any questions. But those overhangs do not come into play with respect to sideline setbacks, so.
So I would presume if you were to make a motion, then Scott, it would probably include something to that effect, right?
I'm working on it.
Charlie, any else?
They kind of included that, though. I was wondering why.
Oh, yeah, I was going to give, what I was going to do is go around the board, and it's going to go to the town.
Because the 14, the 15.2 setback is from the foundation, it's not from, not from the owner.
Right, but when they still made the overhang, oh, it was there for lot coverage. I didn't, I don't.
Well, it does count for lot coverage.
It does, okay.
So Jim?
No, I have no.
Scott, you have any questions?
I do have.
He does. Well, why don't I go to me, and then we'll go back to you, because that would give you a couple of questions. So I see that on the Asville plan, meaning what exists today, you clearly depict the shed, which is colored in orange or some color close to that. But on the to-be-built, it's not colored at all. Am I to presume maybe you didn't include that in lot coverage?
Is that shed staying?
Yeah. And that's included.
Are you, is that a question or a statement? Because you see what I'm saying? It doesn't show orange, and I'm concerned that no lot coverage is calculated.
That's from the original.
Are you confident of that answer?
I am.
Okay. All right.
Do you want me to?
You might want to add something on there just to, yeah, because I, if something doesn't, you know what I mean? It's.
Doesn't say shed is to be removed.
Yeah.
And ordinarily, if the shed were to be removed, it'd be in the plan, indicating that the shed is to be removed.
It's just in a different color. It's colored.
He just didn't state it in on the.
And what I'm going to do after we go to the board, I'm going to go to the zoning enforcement officer and town engineer for comments before we go to the public, if that's okay. And my last question is, there's no new non-conformities being created then?
That's correct.
And you're actually reducing some, not that you have to.
That is also correct.
Okay. So Scott, are you ready?
Nope.
Nope, all right, so Sharon?
I don't have any comments.
Why don't I go to, do you have anything to add to that?
Well, I could just add, the board I wrote in comments dated the August 20th is that basically the lot coverage is, is maxed out, so that, you know, you don't have much room for, you know, adding on anything, which it seems to, it has, you know, that's what has been happening in the past. And the building height is, is much a concern. So we, we'll get those things straightened out, and we'll be fine.
Chris, is this part of your input too?
Yeah, I had sent an email before, and basically, the way the definition of building height is supposed to be measured from the average grade of the proposed dwelling. So you could easily verify it, and this is before you dig your foundation, all was determined.
It should be.
So you actually shoot your four corners of your proposed building, and based on the plan, I've interpolated it, that's about 12.6.
Then correct me if I'm wrong, and once he puts the foundation, and this is a question, puts the foundation, he's got Asville to foundation, why doesn't he at that point do his rough grading, and then he can, and he can certify a building height, because he knows what's going to happen at that point?
If he puts the foundation according to plan.
Does that make sense?
Then he can't build the house that he's proposing. That's the problem. And you'll end up with a house like his building plans show, the existing grade's 12.5.
Yeah.
So you can go 35 feet from 12.5. His proposal is to go 35 feet from 14.5, so the plan's clearly in violation.
So you're saying that this plan that's presented to us right now does not, clearly depicts that we, he would not be in compliance with that requirement?
He would be, he is higher right now.
So if you approve it as it is, he's two feet to five.
Well, that concerns me. I'll tell you why.
That's what the condition is.
What my only concern is, is we've been, I don't, I want to put this, we've been questioned as to whether we should approve plans that are incorrect with them conditioned, or ask the applicant to redo the plans and come back. We've been.
Typically, I see house plans by the architect showing elevations marked on the plan. It'll mark where the top of foundation is, what elevation it's at, it'll mark where the average grade is, it'll mark where the first floor is, and the ridge height. It's all there, black and white. This just says 34.9.
It doesn't have the.
Yeah, so I mean, we can condition it, or, it's not my call, but maybe it should be. I mean, it's a lot of stuff that we're approving that, because it's, it's being approved, and it's a lot of things that need to come to the building department. I don't know if I'm comfortable, but we, I got to, I have one more thing, so.
Why don't we, all right, why don't you do your one more thing then?
I don't know, David, if you looked at this, I, these plans are very vague. I don't have any floor plans. I have the basement and first floor. Do you have them there?
Oh.
Is the attic space being finished?
Yes.
All right, do we know if that's 50%?
Yes.
If he's going to speak, does he need to?
Yeah, no, if a board member's asking, you might want to come to the microphone and introduce yourself, that way it's part of the record.
Just so it's in the record.
Yeah, I'm Blaze Seole, I'm Jeannie's husband. If it gets approved, I'll probably be a builder.
Very nice.
So, so let me address a couple of things. The first thing is, the lot coverage is definitely correct. So Cape and Islands took into consideration the shed, which I think is.
I'm sure.
About 99 square feet.
But we were probably going to just condition that anyway.
We're just going to condition that. The second thing, relative to how the grade calculations were done in the math, that was given to Kate, to the architect by Cape and Islands. So first of all, it's not measured from the garage. If you put that picture back up, there's a, there's a gable that's on both the east and west side. His line is not at the garage, it's through the gable at the middle. So mean average grade of existing conditions was given to the architect by Cape and Islands. So that's an easy one to verify. We know where those grades are going to be. That work's all been done and approved by Conservation. So we're not guessing at this at all, but. So we're not guessing at this at all, but if the math is done incorrectly, I'll clear it up for you.
I think our concern, or my concern as a member of the board is, is we have a town, our town engineer and our zoning enforcement officer that's saying, these plans, if we built to these plans, the elevation with the grades, you put the two together, and we're not in compliance with zoning, if you put the two of them together. And so they are professionals...
But why do you think that he's taking the grade shot off the, he's taking it off the, but he's showing it from the grade, though, not from the bill? He's not giving...
What he did was he took the highest grade.
From the front.
Not the average.
Not the average. So he took, one of the corners of the garage was at about fourteen degree, fourteen four degree, and then he went out thirty-five feet, like two inches from there. It's really clear in the zoning, and if the board would like, I could walk there and verify if he said what to measure off and choose.
Is the issue the plan rather than the grade?
The issue is that the roof height, you see, there's another plan that shows the garage roof height. Right there, that plan, the top plan, shows thirty-five feet to the peak from the garage finished floor. The garage finished floor is fourteen point five feet, which is two feet above the average grade. So you go with two feet above already the average grade, then go on thirty-five, so you're at thirty-seven.
Right.
I don't have a third floor plan of this here. Press the second floor.
I don't think there is a third floor plan.
There is a third floor plan.
No, there isn't, but there's a building height from the garage floor, and they give you a finished floor.
I know what you're saying. Well, all right, so what I like to do is, it would seem to me that when we have our professionals in front of us saying that they are questioning the validity of the plan, in that it may not, it does not comply with zoning, I think what I'd like to do, why don't we go around and let's make sure that there's no other issues that we tonight understand there to be any problem with. Talk to the applicant, point those issues out. At that point in time, have them clean up the plans with either the zoning enforcement officer or town engineer or both. And so, present those plans back to the board, extend it, and then vote on a plan that's correct, that shows all the dimensions. And if there's anything else we wanna bring up to them, we should bring it up tonight, if possible. Not that it isn't an open book, and not that we can't, we're not closing the book, but I'd like to at least be able to say to them, you know, you do this and this, and there's a strong probability you're all set, right? So...
I think we need to see something from the engineer saying that the heights are all correct, or marked on the plan. I really, have you seen a third floor plan this year?
There is a third floor plan. I dropped the third floor plan on myself.
Do you remember it?
Well, if you just make, we may have it. It's okay, let's put it all in one, but let's just make sure that there's...
I got no problem with the third floor, it just has to meet the bylaw.
Let's just make sure there's dimensions on it, make sure that these two gentlemen are happy.
Third floor plan is a floor plan, it's not anything other than a floor.
But it'll have a square footage of living space.
Yep.
As long as it's fifty percent less than the floor, because she's got two floor floors.
It has the knee walls and everything else in it.
Yeah, I'm looking at the architecture, I'm sure it is.
I believe it can conform, conforms to.
Does that make sense to the rest of the board?
I just haven't seen it.
No, it wasn't part of the staple center, it was a separate plan.
Why don't we just go around, are there any other comments that we would like to make to the applicant? Anyone here sitting and understanding, or have any more comments we'd like to make to them?
I think your suggestion is a practical way to dispose of the plan.
Right.
I agree that we should have correct boards.
So what I'd like to do is ask an extension, Mr. Frank, please.
So, you know, I just, so you're asking me to certify the building height before I build it? Because that's what it sounds like, and I've never done that in like thirty years. It sounds like you're asking me to go to Cape and Islands and ask them to certify the building height. And that's not really what...
He's not gonna give you a building permit without showing you that anyway.
No.
He would never give you a building permit without proving it.
Let me just say this, if you went to the town of Foxborough, you wouldn't be able to get a building permit without showing it.
Yeah, I understand that, but I'm not, again, not to be disrespectful, I'm not here to get a building permit. Right? That's not why I'm here. I'm here to know if I can build this building.
But this, if I can just stop you short, this board is saying the following. We have two professionals that represent the town that are saying to us, these plans, if we approve these plans, you're approving plans, correct me if I'm wrong, gentlemen, that do not correctly depict the fact that this building would be built under existing zoning. It would not comply with zoning under these plans. That's what our two professionals are telling these, this board right now. And this board has to vote on an application that says, these plans are wrong.
It gets recorded with the register. Once we approve, they'll get your approval.
These plans are wrong. And I'm not an engineer, and I'm not a building enforcement official or a zoning officer, and so I've got these two gentlemen saying, the plans are wrong.
That's fine. So what you want me to do is have Cape and Islands clean this up and certify the height of the building before I build it?
As one member, I'm asking you to call whomever you need to call to make sure these two gentlemen are satisfied.
That's what we're trying to work, so that's what we'll do.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm not telling you who to use or how to use it.
They need to...
Because I don't know what you want.
He needs to certify the average grade.
What needs to be done is Cape and Islands doesn't need to certify anything, they need to present a plan that meets the rules.
Shows all the...
There you go.
Their plan meets all the rules.
No, it doesn't.
It's the architectural plan that's the big question.
Well, okay.
It needs to go to the architect. The architect needs to note it on, it's more the architect. The architect needs to communicate.
The architectural plan shows a building that doesn't pull...
Let's keep it regimented here. So the bottom line is, is your team, your staff, whomever you choose, needs to make sure, both of these gentlemen right here, report back to this board that these plans, if you were to build them per the plan, you would be under and within the rules and regulations of this community. And right now, they're saying to us, if you built per these plans, you would not be in compliance of our zoning bylaw, or, or our town ordinances, is a better way to...
It's a fairly simple thing to do. Cape and Islands has to communicate with your architect and say, hey, note these elevations on the plan. And that's the plan that'll come to us.
Here's our average elevation, and here's our ridge height. And between the both of them, it doesn't exceed thirty-five feet.
They need to establish the average elevation.
We do it all the time.
It should all be noted on plan.
I would say ninety...
First floor elevation will be there.
Ninety-nine percent of our applications clearly depict that, and the other ones, there's so much room, it doesn't matter. But in this case, you're so close.
Yep.
If you were thirty feet, and we looked at your average, they may not, may not, I'm not talking, I would not speak for them, they may not be questioning it, but you're at thirty-four nine, and you're using an average, you're using an elevation that is not the average. You put the two issues together, it doesn't work.
This drawing is a perfectly level line, showing that's average grade. It can't be.
So what I like to, so any other comments from the board in reference to this application?
That's all, it just needs to be cleaned up. And I have no problem with the plans, I have no problem with the footprint, I have no problem with the house.
Gentlemen, you have any more, any issues?
I'm good.
No.
There's no other issues of plan? Anybody in the audience have any issues?
I'm not from the front.
Okay, having seen Kevin, what are your thoughts?
So, two weeks is gonna be enough time for the actions.
It's all, it's just the way it's depicted. It's not, it's weirdly showing. I'll fix it.
Okay.
Mary Ann? When's our next meeting?
September twenty-second.
Do we have room in there?
Yep.
September, what is it?
Twenty-second, I think. So you're asking for an extension?
I'm asking for an extension to satisfy the board's concerns relative to the height of the building, any accuracy in the plan.
Would someone like to make a motion in reference to that?
I think that would be made. I'd like to make a motion that we continue Five Clamshell Lane to the owners, Jean Seoli, request a special permit under section one seventy-four dash seventeen point one of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a pre-existing non-conforming, non-conforming single-family structure on a property located in our three zoning district, map one nineteen, parcel sixty-six, Mashpee, Mass., with the condition that they bring back more accurate elevations of the home, of, well, elevations of the heights of the home.
And to satisfy...
And to satisfy our zoning enforcement officer and town engineer.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Sharon, second. How's that, Joe? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So the next one. Thirty-six Summer Sea Road. Sharon?
Thirty-six Summer Sea Road. Petitioner Joseph Anastasos requesting special permit under one seventy-four dash seventeen point one and one seventy-four dash thirty-three to raise and replace a pre-existing non-conforming single-family structure on a property located in an R three zoning district, map one oh five, parcel twenty-six, Mashpee, Mass., owner of record, thirty-six Summer Sea LLC.
Hi.
Hello.
Hello. I'm Joe Anastas, I'm one of the owners of the home and the builder. And as she stated, I'm here to petition a request for a special permit, one seventy-four dash seventeen one. Thank you. And seven, one seventy-four dash thirty-three to raise and replace an existing non-conforming single-family structure, property located in our three zoning district, map one oh five, parcel twenty-six. This property has been approved for a three-bedroom. The proposed floor plan depicts that. The septic plan has not been submitted. I have it here tonight. I go to the Board of Health on the twenty-third of this month. I received a variance to transfer the property without upgrading the septic system, but I am putting in a brand-new system. The dwelling is considered condemned, and until the tear down and rebuild of the house occurs, the septic certificate of compliance is issued. I have with me a floor plan, a site septic plan done by Sweetser Engineering, Robin Wilcox. I have a mitigation plan that was required or requested by the Board of Health that was done by Mike Karidosi. And I also have house plans that were done by my architect, Adam Moore. I've been to the ARC, they pre-approved this based on a landscape plan. I've been to the Board of Health, they approved my site plan, septic plan, and that's kinda where I'm at.
Okay. So why don't we go around the board first? What I will do is go around the board, reach out to our two consultants, and at that point, this, George, you'll be on this one, so George, do you have any comments or questions?
Well, just the, a letter written by Evan, which I can read.
Yeah, so why don't, I actually took that out, I apologize. Would you like to read that letter, and then we'll read the other two letters, or any other letters in the, into record?
Happy to do so. Good morning. Letter's dated August second, two thousand and twenty-one. It's to Mary Ann Romano from Evan Lehrer. Good morning, Mary Ann. I'm writing regarding thirty-six Summer Sea Raise and Replace, given a parcel location within the new Sea Berry special permit area. This is a buildable pursuant to the active special permit decision. I do not believe that the board really has the authority to dictate the demolition and replacement of a dwelling on this lot beyond the rights already granted to. In short, the applicant does not need a Board of Appeals approval to demolish this and build a house in the special permit area. Further, for the substantially more detrimental piece, detrimental piece of Raise and Replace, and to continue, extend, or alter, the applicant will need Architectural Review Committee approval from New Sea Berry. I recommend a withdrawal. Signed, Evan.
So that being said, zoning enforcement officer, what are your, what are your thoughts on that?
Well, I did have thoughts. Do you have, do you have my letter I wrote, Mary Ann?
It seemed to me, this is, this is so big, I was gonna read all the letters in, but at this point, we might as well see what this one says first.
Yeah, I mean, this is, Evan does make a good point. I mean, he makes a point that the ARC is, has their own board, and we have our own board. So you have to, the fundamental difference, I would think, is whether this is non-conforming or it's conforming. So, I mean, I could go either way on this. I kinda would like the board to figure out how we wanna do this, if they want me not to send this to ZBA, or send it, or send them, keep sending...
Well, if I could be maybe abrupt, as is zoning enforcement officer, the way I'd look at it is, you would make the decision, if the applicant feels that your decision would be, is incorrect, he could appeal it to this board to overturn that decision. Or you could decide, the only reason why I hate overturn is if you decide that you had to come to us, I presume, because if you decided not to come to us, you wouldn't want to overturn that.
Yeah.
But I don't know if this board would be making the decision on whether it should come to us or not. That would be really your call.
Right.
Mike, please speak up if anyone in this board disagrees.
I agree.
Yeah, if I may...
I think that's your call, and if the applicant's not happy with your call, he can, he can seek relief from this board.
Yeah. This, this property has been empty for a long time. It's really an eyesore. And I did go to the ARC, and they had one request that I move the house over two feet, which I did, on a revised plan. So, you know, I did seek their counsel on that, and I did go to Glenn, and he was good with that. Yeah, I actually, I actually, you know, even though I could use the existing system, I'd wanna put in a brand-new system.
No, I think, I think you're doing a great thing. I mean, as one member, what I've seen so far is all positive. I just, I, and David, I hope you don't take umbrage to this, I just think that it's your call.
Yeah, I understand that. I understand that, you know, like I said, I could go either way on that, and the only thing, the thing that it would prevent is these boards have opposing views on the same subject, you know what I mean? So that is possible.
Yeah, no, I think it is, but I think that as zoning enforcement officer, you say it doesn't have to come to us, and again, we could even actually appeal, in my opinion, your decision, when you say, if you were to say it didn't come in front of us, we could as a board appeal your decision, I would think.
That's true.
But I think it's, I'd make the same, but it's...
So with the board, you know, entertained a withdrawal on the seventeen one, I'm all right with that. I'm all right with that. I'm fine with it.
My attitude is, the acting chair is, if you feel that they do not have to come to us, which would institute or require withdrawal, I would be totally in favor of that. And the applicant has been sent a message that you don't need to come to us. You need to just go to that, to the.
It seems to me that it wasn't done in the past. So it's kind of, that's why it seems to be this the first time.
This is the first I've seen this where we've definitely had houses in the special permit come through. I've brought houses.
Right, exactly. So it hasn't been done in the past. And Evan brought up that point. So it got me thinking and I thought I'd, you know, have a discussion about it.
I get it. And so, correct me if I'm wrong, then you're saying that you would not require him to come to this board if this board voted to ask for a withdrawal?
No, I wouldn't, no, not at all.
You wouldn't require him to come?
For the seventeen one, but there is an issue with the seventeen thirty three that's separate.
Okay. So in reference to the seventeen one, do I have a motion in reference to, I would presume you would seek a withdrawal if in fact this official says, okay, so that's seventeen point one.
But it's all in one. How do I do that?
Well, so why don't we talk about seventeen three three? Talk to me if you would, please, about seventeen three three.
This construction within, he needs relief being fifty feet from the wetlands.
Okay. Has it been advertised, Mary Ann, for that relief?
No, just a razor replace.
Okay.
You should know, it's been on thirty three.
Okay, good.
It was on a thirty three.
So to your point, a calculation was done. And it's actually beyond what I really need to do for the mitigation plan. As you can see, it's over a thousand square feet. So we're taking into consideration the coastal bank. We're going to keep the house.
But are you working within fifty feet of a resource area?
No.
You are not?
Nope.
David?
If the house.
I thought it was. I don't have anything in front of me that.
The house is going to be right where it is.
I get you. I think Chris has input. Chris, please.
I discussed this with Evan today when I looked through the bylaws. They're right about dealing with New Seaberry and that you don't have to come for certain things. The only two things that matter that they're not exempt from is the fifty foot setback in the weapon in the building height.
Right.
And like the last one, you don't want some person to move into a house and it doesn't mean zoning, not getting your arguments. In this case, the plan shows you zero information as far as the bar for your weapon line. It's just a sketch and shows absolutely nothing. And so you can't determine your weapon height. So that would probably have to be entirely determined.
Well, I do have.
Can you determine your fifty foot weapon setback amount of weapon?
Well, I have elevations on the site plan and I have a house plan. And certainly is way below the thirty five foot maximum.
Yeah, I couldn't, with the data you've given me. I'm not saying you are.
I don't think we have that, right?
Well, it would seem to me.
It's, I was certain that it was within fifty feet of the wetlands.
So Chris, if I may, as an engineer, it is not clearly depicted in your opinion on a plan by conservation through an N R A D or another process where that line is. It is not clearly depicted.
And basically conservation, and I think Board of Health have similar comments.
Well, we haven't read those into the record yet.
We have not enough information on this plan to.
Why don't we do this then? Why don't we read those two letters of next? Because it seems to me they were pertinent to the discussion. And then we'll go back to it and see where we want to go with this.
All right, I have one more.
It may not, the stuff may not be germane to zoning law.
Well, let's read both those letters into the record and see what they have to say, right?
Before I do that, Chris, you also mentioned something about lot coverage in your letter.
Yeah, you can't, well, they don't have to actually comply to lot coverage on, I don't believe.
Because of the special.
Because of the special permit?
The only thing I read was the two things in that neighborhood they have to comply with is the weapon. I didn't see this plan, so that's right. The one I sent was just that blue sketch. It had zero information, which is a lot better.
Yeah, my bad.
Well, Sharon, why don't you read those two at the last? I'd like to see what they have to say.
Board of Health. Thirty six Summer Sea Road. The property is approved for three bedrooms. The proposed floor plans depict three bedrooms. Septic plans have not been submitted, so no septic or building permit approvals can be issued until the septic design is approved. The owner received a variance to transfer the property with upgrading the septic. The dwelling is considered condemned until the tear down and rebuild of the house occurs and the septic certificate of compliance is issued. Conservation. Thirty six Summer Sea Road. This project is currently before the Conservation Commission. The hearing has been continued to September ninth and will likely be continued again to lack of sufficient information regarding landscape mitigation plans requirements.
So I don't know how we could deal with the requirement or lack thereof of a setback to a resource area when you haven't set the resource area.
I have a mitigation plan that will be submitted to the Board of Health. I mean, to the Conservation Commission. I'm actually meeting Drew out there next week. He's already been there once.
But I'm just saying to you that, this, again, as the chairperson, I'm just saying that you do not have a line that's been agreed to by a Conservation Commission of this town that says, here's the line and this is the distance I'm going to be from that line with my work limit. Because you haven't agreed on that line yet. So you don't know if you need relief from the line because you don't know where the line is.
Well, I would assume that on that site plan, it should tell us where the.
It doesn't show.
Well, and Drew and the Conservation Commission could make it, could put it here, there, there, here. It's called an N R A D, right? So we're notice of termination applicability. And so, once you determine that line, then you'll know and so won't the officials of this community will know whether you need to come to us or not.
It'll be on the plan, saying what the distance is.
Right now, we have no idea whether you need to come to us.
It shows the top of coastal bank, but there's no measurements. That's the problem.
Am I correct, gentlemen, in this presumption?
It shows the top of the bank?
This just says top of coastal bank.
With no dimension.
But it says fence, top of bank, but there's no dimensions.
Well, you could have coastal, you could have, there's a lot of resource areas.
Unfortunately, it's very.
I just don't know how this board can react to the application. I get the first part of it, which would be, I would presume, that first section in dealing with whether you need to come here or not, that's easy, I think, to deal with. The section, the second issue being setback from resource area, when you haven't gone to conservation and set that resource area line, we don't know if, number one, you need relief? And if you do need relief, how much that relief is?
Yeah, all I know is that when I went to see Andrew weeks ago, he went out and checked the property. And his opinion was I wasn't going to have a problem as long as I kept the house in the same spot that it's in.
But understand now, that's with conservation. So I think what he's saying, I can't speak for Andrew. He's saying, hey, I think you'll get by conservation. They'll do what they need to do.
With a heavy mitigation plan.
Exactly, there you go. Now, but at that point, they're going to set a line. They are going to agree on our disagreement, but they're going to set a line of a resource area. At that point, the gentleman to your right are going to say, all right, you do or don't have to come to this board for relief. And if you do, you're going to have to come for X amount of inches or feet or whatever, really. We don't know what that is. Or even if you have to come. See, if you would have gone to.
Well, I tried, but I got.
No, I get it. No, I get it. It's just part of the process, right? It's just the way life is. But I'm just saying, I don't know how this board could vote on the second part of your issue, which is a setback relief or your setback from a resource area when you haven't determined the resource.
We can't vote on a setback because we don't know the distance to give you a variance for or a relief for.
There's no way. And better way to put it, how much relief are you seeking?
Again, I'm just keep.
That's my point. I always ask an applicant when I sit here.
Honestly, my honest answer is, I'm not a hundred percent sure. All I know is that I was told that if I keep the house and not move it forward or backwards, that I would be okay.
I would recommend the following, that you ask this board to continue your second part of your equation, which is the setback from a resource area. And the first part, you would probably ask for, what's the best way from?
Withdrawal.
Yeah, so you probably ask for a withdrawal in the first piece. Because our zoning enforcement officer says you no longer have to come to this board for that piece. So I would ask that you would ask for a withdrawal under one seventy four seventeen one. That would be your request. And then an extension under one seventy four thirty three until such time as the resource area has been, well, you've got to go to a date certain, but I would like you to pursue in front of conservation the setting of that resource line and so that you'll know how much relief, if any, that you will seek from this board. You may find you won't have to come back to this board under one seventy four thirty three either.
Chris, you're open.
He may say to you as a zoning enforcement officer that, you know what? Conservation just set the line. You're fifty foot, two inches from that line. You don't even have to go to Z B A for that. But at this point, there's a possibility you'll have to come to us. So what I'd request you to do is to extend that. You probably should extend that for more than just one meeting, though. Because it sounds like to me Conservation's going to go out till when was that?
Twenty third.
June third?
Twenty third.
Twenty third. So we've got to extend till after that. So when would the next meeting be after the June twenty third?
October thirteenth.
So if you could ask for a withdrawal under one seventy four seventeen one and ask for an extension until?
October thirteenth.
October thirteenth on one seventy four thirty three, this board will vote on your request. Please.
Can I just ask one question?
Certainly.
So if I don't need the relief, I don't have to come back for the October thirteenth meeting?
Nope. That gentleman right there will tell you whether you do or you don't.
Okay, so I am.
Along with that gentleman over there, with that beard that's in there. All over the hair on his face.
Withdrawal of one seventy four dash seventeen point one and an extension to October thirteenth for one seventy four dash thirty three.
Would you like to make?
I'm going to make two motions.
There you go.
I'd like to make a motion to withdraw from petitioner Joseph Anassas requesting a special permit under section one seventy four dash seventeen point one to rate, is it to raise or replace or is it?
It's a special permit.
To raise or replace a preexisting, nonconforming single family structure on a property located in our three zoning district, map one oh five parcel twenty six, Mashpee, Mass. Owner of record thirty six Summer Sea LLC with the following, the condition is it's going to be extended to October thirteenth.
Well, one seventy four thirty three is going to be extended.
I'm sorry, one seventy four, I'm more, what this is the withdrawal.
Yes.
I crossed over with that.
Yep.
With, and.
Yes. So that's the, why don't we vote on the withdrawal first? So who would like to make a motion on the withdrawal? Who would like to make a second on the motion that was just issued in reference to the withdrawal? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
So it's withdrawn. Now, why don't we go over to one seventy four thirty three?
I'd like to make a motion that we continue with thirty six Summer Sea Road, petitioner Joseph Anassas requesting a special, not the special permit, is this?
This is, it's a special permit for a setback from wellings.
Under one seventy four dash thirty three to raise or replace a preexisting, nonconforming single family structure on a property located in our three zoning district, map one oh five parcel twenty six, Mashpee, Mass. Owner of record thirty six Summer Sea LLC with the following, that we continue to October thirteenth.
I have a question. Is that advertised as a special permit for one seventy four thirty three or a variance? Okay. As long as it's advertised that way.
Then the petitioner will supply a site plan depicting the setbacks from coastal resource area.
Perfect. You have a second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Hopefully that works out for you. Thank you.
Thanks, Rebecca.
So David, I didn't want to put it in your court, but I had to to a court. You know what I mean? I don't.
That's fine. That's fine. Well, at least you know where we, you know, we're going.
Yeah, no, I got a hundred percent. I mean, when I'm chair, I look at it as zoning enforcement officers almighty. No, really. That's my attitude. Come on. Yeah, you gave me the two best of the week. Two best of the week.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, that's back. Okay, who did you have on the last two?
So I utilized both of these gentleman's expertise in both of those hearings. Each one at a different time.
Okay.
So we're utilizing.
I can sit, I don't need to vote.
No, we're going to get Sharon on five oh two main.
Okay.
Okay. So Sharon, would you read the first new hearing, please?
Five oh two Main Street. Petitioner, the five oh two Main Street LLC requests a special permit modification under one seventy four dash twenty five G twelve of the zoning bylaws to change the use of a previously permitted health club facility to a self-storage warehouse on property located in a C three I one in light industrial overlay district, Mashpee, Mass.
So are you scared?
Here we have.
So, again, members of the board, Kim and Karang, follow the record. And I represent the owners of the commercial and industrial lot, situated number one thirty. This one should be relatively non-controversial, I would think. We don't have any building height issues. We don't have any other issues of that nature. All we're seeking to do here is to add an additional use under the grant of special permit relief. The board, back, back a number of years ago, nineteen ninety eight, authorized a number of different uses for this particular piece of property. And it has been used primarily as a gym, women's world, a women's workout center, whatever, spa. And now it has a different name. It had a different name more recently. And the owners and operators of the self-storage facility right next door, which I believe is Anchor Self-Storage, also own this property. So they, it is their intent to use this property largely in connection with the operation of their other self-storage facility adjacent to it. So there are no changes in the site. Everything that's occurring is occurring on the inside of the building. They're retrofitting the inside of the building to accommodate self-storage units. There will be, there will be a fence that's added and a security gate on the exterior. But other than that, we're simply seeking to allow the use of the facility for a self-storage warehouse purpose. And that is allowed under a special permit as set forth in the bylaw.
Easy enough.
Easy one.
So no changes to the building, really, except the inside.
That's my understanding.
So it makes life easy for us here. So all we're going to consider, really, is the change, whether it's detrimental.
I don't know whether they're going to add a doors or anything else to the exterior of the building, but everything, there's no change to the footprint of the building.
So there's no height to deal with? There's no sideline setbacks?
Parking.
There's no front?
Parking.
There's tons of parking.
It's more than parking.
So we don't have to discuss parking? The fire department's already good with?
Yeah, what kind of concerns do we have with other permitting of these types of facilities?
Like smoke, fire department, like smoke or anything?
Do they require an additional smoke or sprinkler system now? That they're, somebody could store a motorcycle in there, right? It's got gas.
Well, that would be taken in the permit process anyway. One thing I did do was look and see which board this was appropriate for. Planning board ordered Z B A and the previous was C B A. So this is at the right board. And I don't have any.
Go back to plan review.
No, we did not do plan review because there were no site changes. Simply use change.
So what happens if I want to store a hundred gallons of fuel in there and fifty-five gallons of oil?
And I would presume that the fire department would be involved.
Well, it didn't go to plan review.
I'm not going to let them know.
Well, you can condition on that, but I mean, fire department is part of one of the town.
Did they have, did the fire department get to look at this at some level?
No.
They will on the building.
That would have happened during plan review.
Which they didn't do.
Which didn't happen.
But it'll go through fire department. They won't get a building permit until fire department signs off on it.
Like I said, this is a modification of a special permit. It's already been approved by the Z B A.
Plan review didn't exist in nineteen ninety.
So I guess my question is, is will the, let's say, fire department have a stamp of approval on this modification?
Well, when we, when we go through the permit process, yeah.
They will.
Yeah. They were already, it's, like I said, I did look into it whether this should go before the planning board through the planning board committee. But we're in the right, we're the right board for this.
So police and fire will look at this?
Yeah, they will. They will during the permit process.
Police would look at it during the building. I don't know why police.
Fire definitely will.
I know when we did the special permit for Zachary's, the exterior of the building is not changing, but that all went through plan review.
Interesting.
I wasn't told they had to go to plan review. And this has been filed.
I did talk to that.
In nineteen ninety eight, there was no plan review process. So there is a special permit that exists for this property, which I would submit to the board. Effectively freezes the zoning on this particular site[1609.14]
Probably not police, probably not Conservation. So the big one would be fire.
And maybe-
Water Health.
But there's probably already a bathroom there. I mean, it would require to have a bathroom.
Glenn does have a comment.
There's a bathroom.
Water Health has a comment.
Why don't we read Glenn's comments?
Okay. Five oh two Main Street, Water Health. The change in use requires a septic inspection per Title V. The plans did not reference in office. Will this location have onsite management? If there is, there needs to be bathroom facilities for the management personnel and the public. There should be bathrooms maintained for the public anyway.
Okay, are there any proposed bathrooms?
I don't see any office space either.
Far as you know, Kevin?
Yeah, I believe there are bathrooms.
Let's see what we have.
There's two rooms that are, next to that five by ten, I don't know what they're going in.
They're relocating, they're relocating the bathrooms.
That's the wrong one, it would have to show on here.
Well, there would have been bathrooms in there in the first place.
That's the wrong one.
They're just being, they're being relocated, basically, and there's no manager's, no manager's facility being proposed at the present time.
Well, it was a, it was a women's workout place, they had to be.
I'm sure there were bathrooms and showers and everything else.
Isn't the office in the other building? Isn't the office in the other building?
If you look at the, if you look at the interior plan that they provided, there's two storage spaces towards the front of the building that are five by ten and five by ten.
Sharon, can you blow that up a little, so we can get a closer look at that? Maybe that'll show something.
See that area there, I believe that's where, I believe that's square with the doors where the bathroom facility is being provided.
There's obviously no office space. It's all, you probably get a key when you're out of the building, you go to your storage unit.
As I said-
And I'm sure they have, where it's an indoor storage unit, I'm sure there are requirements that you can't put flammable products in.
You know, the fire department may have rules about that for storage.
Yeah, I mean, it's not like they have overhead doors, one of those type ones.
So why wouldn't we, why wouldn't we just, you know, put in, as one of the conditions that they seek and obtain approval?
When you do all that interior renovation, it will require a building permit, and it'll all come-
It's going to happen anyway, we're being redundant, but I still think it makes sense on this board, as one member, to make it hard of a motion.
I agree.
So that would be B of H and Board of Health and Fire Department, right? Do we, is there anything else we can?
We agree. Chris, your thoughts? Anybody missing?
Yeah, I mean, if you don't have any bathrooms to just storage, well, I have a septic inspection, you don't need them.
Well, I believe there is a bathroom, there is a bathroom there.
I think Glenn wants a bathroom for the public.
There is a bathroom there.
If there's a bathroom, then the bylaw, what's, what's my case?
The only other one, treasurer and historic? I think it is an historic.
It's, 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 yeah, it's grandfather, so it's got to be historic.
It's an existing building.
That hurts, doesn't it, Kevin? That makes it historic.
That's the only other people.
There you go. You can't have it both ways.
That's the other people that I would, I would, I would put on the permit for their approval, that's all.
And who would that be? I'm sorry, I was just-
Treasurer and historic.
Treasurer?
They're missing taxes to pay, I'm assuming.
Well, that'll get, the treasurer signs off on it when I file the application.
Yeah.
I have to demonstrate that the taxes should be-
So treasurer, historic, Board of Health, and Fire Department, and you're going to have to get their approval anyway.
Yeah, I mean, there's no question about it. I mean, people store cars in, in a lot of these facilities that have been built in the industrial park, you know, that they store antique cars and things of that nature, so that, that all comes into play as part of it.
This doesn't appear to have to overhead doors, I think it's all indoor storage.
I think it is, I think it is.
They're strictly dry, I'm sure they have rules.
They told me there were no exterior changes to the site, so-
Because it was, it was a gym before, so it must be all open.
I think it's just, I think it's just indoor storage, you know, personal items.
I think they're just creating boxes.
Yeah, I think people are going to be, you can't get a motorcycle in there.
I don't know, I really think it has to go before plan.
Ron's going to hide his bike there.
It's not alcohol. I didn't, I spoke to, um, and early this morning about this, he had no issues.
Alright, I think, I think we can handle this the way Ron suggested. That makes a lot of sense. Look, you know, we don't have to drag this through the mud.
As you say, most of the boards that would be involved in site plan, there is no site change, and there's no design change, so.
Right.
I got no problem with that. All good.
Sharon, any other questions?
No.
Jim?
No.
Alright, Ron, would you like to make a more, oh, wait a minute, have we read everything in?
Yeah, there was just clarification.
Anybody like to make a comment?
Somebody in the audience.
Okay, go right ahead.
I'd like to voice my support for the applicant.
There you go. I'd like to make a motion that we issue a special, a modification of a special permit. Do we have the special permit number that we're modifying?
Didn't I get that together?
I don't have it in my motion, and I think it would probably make sense, so when you record it, makes reference to it.
One seventy-four twenty-five?
That would be the section of the zoning bylaw.
I thought I had put it in there, but-
Well, you, if you don't need it, I won't put it in.
It's here, it's special permit decision, SP ninety-eight dash twenty-five.
Ninety-eight dash twenty-five?
Correct.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we issue a modification to the special permit ninety-eight dash twenty-five, SP ninety-eight dash twenty-five, issued to five oh two Main Street LLC petitioner under section one seventy-four twenty-five G, open print twelve, closed print, of the zoning bylaw to change the use of a previously permitted health club facility to a self-storage warehouse on property located in a C three I one in light industrial overlay district Mashpee, Mass. with the following conditions. One, board has determined the applicant meets all conditions of a special permit modification under Mash General Laws forty-eight, section nine. Site plan, five oh two Main Street Mashpee, Mass., date June nine, twenty twenty-one, scale one inch equals twenty feet, prepared for Kat McGregor, prepared by Down Cape Engineering Inc., signed by Dan Ola, P E P L S, date six nine twenty-one. Building plans, five oh two Main Street Route one thirty, Mashpee, Mass., provided by Trochti Building Systems Inc., date July thirty, twenty twenty, sheet index A one dot zero. Petition floor plan, B one zero. Petition top angle plan, B two dash zero, or dot zero. Bridging bracing plan, B three zero. Mesh plan, C one zero. Petition isometric details, C two zero. Petition system section, views and notes, signed by Ross T. Maury, structural professional engineer, number four five seven seven four. Condition number four, the applicant will seek and obtain approval from the Board of Health, Fire Department, Treasurer and Historic Committee of this town prior to submittal of a building permit.
Question presented.
And, correct me wrong, there will be a building permit, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. Prior to a building permit's submittal. Number five, condition, all town comments read into the records.
Who's the second?
Okay.
I'm curious about the historical committee. What, what authority does this historical committee have? There's nothing in the zoning bylaw requiring us to go to the historical committee. I'm not quite sure what, and, and does this go out that far, or is it just in the Mashpee Center Overlay District?
It's, it's in the Center Overlay, so I have to-
But this isn't in the Mashpee Center Overlay District.
I could be wrong.
This property is not in the Mashpee Center Overlay District, and it may be that the Mashpee Center Overlay District is the one that has jurisdiction over historical issues.
I'm just making-
I would not, I would ask that that not be put in the permit. If it's required, then the building commissioner can make that determination.
Well, I'm just following as, as the person asked to make the motion, per the building enforcement officer, zoning enforcement officer, he asked that it be included.
Somebody show me, somebody show me why this project would need to be there.
I will amend my, my-
It's in the light-
I will amend it if the zoning enforcement officer says it doesn't need to be included.
It's in the light industrial overlay district, but I don't believe it's in the Mashpee Center Overlay District.
Would it be better if they put if required?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, we can do that, because I, I thought that this, that whole, that whole street was a historical street. The front of it, huh?
Alright, I will amend my motion to say number, so number four will be, the applicant will seek and obtain approval from the Board of Health, Fire Department, Treasurer, and if necessary, the historical committee of this community prior to making application for a building permit.
amended second.
Okay, so Jim's second, so let's do a roll call. Sharon, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Well done.
Thank you. Okay.
Signatures, anyone?
Go, doctor.
There you go.
Have a good night, all.
Good night.
Well done.
Good. No, it's Sharon, it's got to be Sharon. We keep bypassing Sharon.
Because you're sitting at the wrong end of the desk.
I didn't-
You got to go left before you go right.
People looking for free advice, you're intriguing, if it's good. Anyway, so.
You earned your doctorate, didn't you?
Oh, oh, oh.
Charlie.
Jim made people happy.